So, welcome Stuart Carl.
Well, thank you for having me.
Yeah, we're happy to have you here. I think the logical place to begin, just because of the amount of attention that growth and development issues are receiving in the community, is with those topics and in particular with your position that, as I understand it, is advocating a moratorium on any new commercial development in Palo Alto pending the conclusion of the comprehensive plan process. I wonder if you could explain why you think that's necessary and also what gives you confidence that the comprehensive plan process is both going to finish and finish in a way that you're comfortable with?
Well, one thing I've been really trying to do with my campaign is make sure people understand that office construction is the engine that's driving development in Palo Alto and it's a highly leveraged engine. And by that I mean for every, we have a typical office worker now working in about 75 square feet of space and that office worker would need 750 square feet to live in. So, for every 75 square feet of office space we build, we need to figure out if we're going to balance our jobs and housing, we have to figure out how to build 10 times that amount of residential space. So, this is a very highly leveraged engine of development. So, and right now, we're not coping very well with that. It's stressing all of our infrastructure, it's stressing our ability to provide housing, it's stressing our parking, it's stressing our traffic, it's stressing our, putting stress on our retail by pushing up the cost of real estate. So, I think it's really, we really need to take a breather and I'm not calling for a ban, it's just a moratorium. And right now, there's not a lot of new office being applied for. We have a lot in the pipeline, but there's not a lot being applied for. So, I think it's time to put a moratorium on and really figure out how we're going to cope with the highly leveraged office development.
So, the current cap that's in place, that will remain in place until the comprehensive plan process is complete, is not satisfactory to you?
No, because the cap of 50,000 square feet has a big trailer that it's pulling, a 500,000 square feet of residential construction. And that's just the residential construction, that doesn't include the impacts on traffic. And I don't think we've really come to grips with how we cope with the office construction and all the kind of social problems that it drags along with it.
And to my question about the comprehensive plan review, what's your assessment of the direction that that group is headed and the likelihood that the council's actually going to be able to find a consensus around whatever is concluded there?
Well, you know, I think they're heading in a good direction on the comprehensive plan, but my biggest problem with the comprehensive plan is it's a poor form of leadership. It's a big, long document, it's full of all kinds of acronyms that most of the public don't understand. And it's also a document that even experts can read and interpret differently. I think we really need to have someone that can articulate a vision that our residents can understand and that's leadership instead of management. And I think calling for a moratorium and explaining how office construction affects our community is better leadership than the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is more of a management tool than leadership, in my view.
So, what's that going to look like for, to satisfy you? In other words, you want to impose a commercial development moratorium. What is it that will be developed or arrived at from a policy standpoint that'll enable you to support renewed, a renewal of commercial development?
Well, the comprehensive plan would have to explain how all the different infrastructure would be grown at the same rate or, you know, the leveraged rate that office drives.
But what would that look like? I mean, how would one even approach that? You'd have to deal with parking, transportation, you'd have to deal with housing impacts. What would that look and feel like to you?
Well, granted, it's very complicated, but you know, that's the challenge that we're not meeting is how do we, I mean, it's very simple to build offices, but it's really difficult and complicated to figure out how you solve all the problems that office construction drives. So, you know, I can't give, you know, a quick explanation of that, it is extremely complicated. We're also dealing with a very complex environment in terms of transportation where we have new transportation technologies evolving that are going to have major impacts on the city. So, you know, a simple answer is that the comprehensive plan has to explain how it's going to build our infrastructure to carry all of the load that office construction drives.
So, just one more follow-up on this. There are those that advocate for very aggressive transportation management approaches which basically argue that we can reduce the parking requirements of both residential and commercial space by creating robust alternatives. Do you embrace that concept? And if not, then are you advocating for very strong parking requirements of any new development? How do you weigh those two directions?
No, I don't embrace that. I think that those, the direction that the city's taking with shuttles and traffic demand management systems haven't worked. I mean, let's face it, our, the shuttle buses are running around empty or even our buses are running around mostly empty. So, I think the city has spent too much time trying to solve a problem with a very inadequate tool. Realistically, I mean, I did some back-of-the-envelope calculations and automobiles are carrying 99% of our passenger miles every day. And you cannot solve that problem by putting that, trying to put that into a system that combined, you know, trains, bikes, and buses combined carry 1% of the transportation miles every day. So, how do you take the 99% and cram it into that 1% to solve the problem? So, I think these are more like, I consider them more like fig leaves that paper over and hide the real transportation problems that we're having and let people pretend that we're solving them when we're not and continue with development.
Some people look at the jobs-housing imbalance and want to balance it out with high-density housing. I understand from the Palo Alto Neighborhoods questionnaire that you are opposed to high-density housing, is that correct? So, what do you think about the idea of increasing developer subsidies of below-market housing, for example, to 25% from 15% in order to get more housing somehow that's affordable?
I think that's a good idea. I think that's, you know, that's a direction we can take. I mean, it's, you know, a lot of people are saying it, but Palo Alto cannot house everyone in the Bay Area. We can try to help and that's one way that we can try to help and I think it's worthwhile to do that. You know, I don't like the term affordable housing because I don't think there's any such thing as affordable housing in Palo Alto. It's extremely expensive and just using that term kind of misleads people. You know, we can talk about expensive housing and somewhat less expensive housing, but that's really what we're dealing with here. I don't think that, given the macroeconomic climate, that we can ever really make Palo Alto affordable in a free market to teachers and people like that. We're past that. You know, talking about making Palo Alto affordable to teachers is like talking about making Beverly Hills affordable to teachers or Manhattan affordable to teachers. You know, my rough calculation that there's a $65 billion residential real estate market in Palo Alto and realistically, what can the city do to affect that size of a market is questionable in terms of, you know, reducing prices. I don't think it can do much, but you know, including, you know, increasing the incentives is a good way to try to do something and try to help make something a little less expensive. I'm not going to use the word affordable.
Well, some people have favored this recently proposed development at the VTA lot, the corner of Al Camino and Pageville Road. So, smaller units, more affordable. And they argue that it would also address some of the impacts that you talk about, which is there's near-public transit, so people wouldn't necessarily have cars, it could even serve the people who live in or who work at Stanford Research Park. Why wouldn't this kind of housing be preferable to some others?
Well, I was actually at the Palo Alto, the city council meeting where that project was discussed. I don't know where to begin talking about what's wrong with that project, just about everything is wrong with it. You know, it continues this pattern of giant giveaways to real estate developers in terms of, you know, Eric Philseth really clearly pointed out that the instant that that property is rezoned is like a $25 million benefit to the developer. And the public benefit that the city's getting in exchange for that doesn't really come close to covering the $25 million benefit that the developer would get out of it. I believe it also continues this kind of make-believe world of parking where we're going to have 60 units in that building that would probably house up to as much as 90 people and we're only going to have 45 units of parking for it and...
So, you don't buy that everyone would be taking public transportation and biking?
No, no. There's no way to even enforce it. I mean, we still have a free market in housing. I mean, I think that would be, if I was working at Apple, I think that'd be a great location to live. You know, I had a client in Campbell and I was commuting south on the freeway at rush hour in the morning and it's smooth sailing going south and I'm looking at northbound and it's bumper-to-bumper stop and go. So, I think that would be a wonderful location for an Apple employee to live. They could get to work in 20 minutes and live in Palo Alto and have their kids in Palo Alto schools.
And what would you like to see there then, if not the proposal as it's been put forward?
Well, I think it should be preserved with this existing zoning because there's not many places that have that zoning left in Palo Alto. And once that zoning is changed, we'll never get it back. It's, you know, it's zoned for public use. They don't make that anymore. How would we ever get that public use back? You know, I'm not sure what should go in there. People have been talking about a possibility of, you know, our animal care shelter and other, you know, public uses. Maybe, you know, it's not a great location for that, but maybe the city should talk about trading that to the developer for some other property that could be, you know, rezoned as that public use classification.
Okay. So, for those that might be listening to this and thinking, okay, he wants no more commercial development, he wants no more housing development, just what is his vision for the future of this city? What would your response be?
Well, I wouldn't say that I want no more office development. I think I've pretty clearly said that I want a moratorium until we understand how to grow our infrastructure at the same rate that office is growing. So, that's my vision, is that the way to preserve our quality of life is to make sure that all of our infrastructure grows at the same rate that our office development is growing. And right now, we're not succeeding. You know, at the recent forum, a lot of people were asked, you know, what city should be a good model for Palo Alto? And a lot of people said Los Gatos and a lot of people said San Francisco. But we're not becoming San Francisco. You know, San Francisco has 4.4 acres of park space for every thousand residents. Palo Alto has 2.8. We're not growing into even a city like San Francisco, we're growing into something worse than San Francisco. Even New York has 3.3 acres per thousand residents. So, we're really not, our, people haven't realized it because of how much construction is in the pipeline, that all of our infrastructure is really falling behind the pace of development.
So, why would you not, given the statistics that you're citing, why would you not place housing above commercial development as a priority? If we're going to build anything, given your desire to have these impacts addressed and so forth, why would you ever want to build more commercial development, given how far behind we've come on the housing side of the equation from your own description?
Yeah. Well, I agree, but I mean, and I would even support looking, I mean, this is kind of blue-sky kind of idea at this point, but I would even support looking at the city exploring ways and finding ways to convert commercial space to housing. That would be a twofer, right? I mean, now you're taking that highly leveraged situation where office creates 10 times as much residential and you're reversing it and that would be a very powerful way to rebalance our commercial and residential floor space. So, you know, I think that we need to look at more powerful tools to address the problem since it's so highly leveraged and that would be one way of doing it. Because it's going to be really hard to do it at this 10 to 1 ratio just by working on housing. I think we also have to work on office.
So, land costs is what drives up the price of housing here, obviously. The city owns a whole lot of parcels that are, some would say underutilized because they, all they have on them is a parking lot. Do you have any vision for what we might do with our public parking lots to utilize them for, for example, more housing?
Well, I think the city has to be very careful how it uses the limited amount of property that it owns. The city doesn't actually own a lot of property. They own, you know, parts of Coverly, they own some parking lots, they own the Ventura School. But for a city of this size, that's not really a lot of property for the city to hold in reserve for different things that could have come about in the future. I mean, right now, it seems like, I mean, the schools and the, you know, the amount of children we have that need to get, to go to school varies. You know, it's been up and then down and now it's going up a little bit more. So, you know, in terms of like Coverly, I think the city needs to, you know, retain control of those properties for future uses. We may, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, there's a lot of people saying the millennials aren't having a lot of children, but you know, how long that's going to hold, we don't know. They could be waiting five years or 10 years and we could have another baby boom. So, you know, I would really like the city to, I mean, I think Tom DeVois has a pretty good plan that he's been working on for Coverly, but I would like to make sure that the city has, whatever buildings they build there are kind of multi-use, so they're much more adaptable for future needs, much more flexible. In terms of the, you know, we have some parking places right over here in, near California Street that, you know, one of them slated or being considered for a new public service building for the, for the police. I think we ought to make sure we have plenty of parking in there.
A part of where that parking is going to go is going to be in a new garage on the lot next to where the public service, this public safety building is going to go. That would be an example of where we're going to put a garage on a parking lot and where we could, if we had a little broader vision of things, put on top of the garage a whole lot of housing. Is that something that you would consider? And as an add-on, are there any circumstances where you could imagine yourself approving or submitting to the voters for their approval exceeding a 50-foot height limit?
So, let's cover the first one first. Yeah, I think that that's a good idea. I mean, looking at building housing on top of a parking lot is, I don't think living on top of a parking lot's a great place to live, but given the need for housing in the city, I think that'd be something we should really look at. And we should definitely make sure that whatever we build there as a parking lot could support housing on top of it, you know, build the...
Structurally.
Structurally strong enough to support housing so that we have that option of building it. So, I think that'd be a good idea. And then, sorry about the second part of your question.
The 50-foot height limit?
No, I don't, I'm not supporting the 50, I'm supporting the 50-foot height limit. I think it's really a central part of our character of the city that residents want to retain. You know, we've, we already have problems with 35-foot buildings, you know, on Alma Street that have, you know, essentially created kind of these urban canyons that people don't like and are not really human scaled and not a human-friendly environment. So, you know, unless we can revise our zoning laws in such a way that a building that exceeds 50 foot can still retain that kind of human scale, I think we need to keep at least the 50-foot height limit in place.
So, I don't hear a lot of people complaining about 101 Alma, Channing House, the President Apartments, Stevenson House. We have a lot of buildings that are over 50 feet high in this community.
Yeah. Well, if you have a few buildings that are over 50 feet and those buildings have obviously been grandfathered in, you can still kind of retain the same kind of feeling to the city, but it's going to be a totally different thing if every building was that high.
Of course, and that's not what I'm probing toward. What I'm looking at is if there was an opportunity to provide a public benefit such as truly affordable housing, subsidized housing on city property, would you be willing to look at a seven, eight-story project on that site?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think we really need to maintain the 50-foot height limit. I think we have enough buildings that already exceed that and if we start setting the precedent for taller buildings, we're really going to lose the character of the city. And I think there's still options below 50 feet to continue to build some, you know, more affordable housing that's under 50 foot.
One of the reasons that you say that you're running has to do with architectural compatibility. And I believe you said that we need a more independent and professional architectural review board. Can you just explain a little bit about your thinking there?
Well, I have a background in design and I've gone to architectural review board meetings and I'm just not impressed with the quality of critique that's coming out of the architectural review board. And I would like to see a lot more professionalism on the board, people with proven records of developing really exemplary architectural structures. Right now, our board seems kind of mediocre and I think the, you know, the city council can't be expected to have that understanding of architecture and aesthetics and I think they need to get much better critiques from the, from the architectural review board that they're getting. Because this is, you know, this is very complicated, sophisticated stuff. You know, I heard, I went to a city council meeting and I heard Corey Wolbach saying, "Well, we're just talking about subjective stuff." You know, as if subjective things are arbitrary. You know, all art is subjective, but that doesn't mean it's arbitrary and that one decision is no better than the other. You know, there is better architecture and there is worse architecture and we need a high level of professionalism to sort the two out.
Well, given that the city's at the mercy of volunteers who are willing to serve, I mean, how would you recruit higher quality and how would you, you know...
Well, we have a lot of, we have a lot of talented people still in the city and I think I could encourage a lot of them to help, to participate. We have a, we have a company downtown called IDEO, which we have a lot of people, a lot of those people are living in the city and they have a lot of expertise. A lot of them have gone through a program at Stanford that fuses aesthetics and engineering and I think they could bring a lot to the, to the process and a lot better design and architectural critique. It is a problem, you know, getting talented people, but I think we have to work harder recruiting very talented, professional people to be on the board if we want to get better reviews from the board than we are now. I mean, we really can't have, we can't expect volunteer amateurs to give very high-degree professional critiques of architectural projects.
To follow up on that, the city council, of course, the ARB in the case of anything that's appealed goes to the city council who are even less qualified to make those judgments.
Right.
Do you, do you believe that the process needs to be changed or just the competence of the people serving?
I think it's mostly the competence of the people serving. Now, a lot of people involved in the process now have told me that the architectural review board is doing a lot better job in the last year than they have been doing in the past, so that's good. But I think really, we should have less projects going to the council to do essentially the job that the architectural review board should be doing. I mean, we had the project on Litten and the whole, you know, I was at that meeting of the council and it was all about architectural issues. So, why is the council spending two and a half hours talking about architectural issues after a project's already been through the architectural review board process? That's wasting a lot of council's time and asking council to be involved in something like you said is not in their core competency. You know, these projects that have architectural problems should not make it through the architectural review board. They're just, the city council is being, you know, overburdened. I mean, they have a very limited amount of time. We have a city council that essentially close to volunteers, like our architectural review board. I mean, city council members are getting paid $600 a month for, you know, essentially what's half-time work. So, when we have an architectural review board that's not functioning, it's really using up a lot of the time of the council and making the council operate a lot less efficiency, efficiently and distracting the council away from other more important issues that it could be working on. We have plenty of issues that the council, needs the council's attention.
But isn't a lot of it just about politics? I mean, people are using the appeal process to get to the political, the electeds in order to achieve an outcome that politically they want. And the reason, the focus is on the architectural aspects is because in many of these cases, that has to be legally the reason for putting, sending back the project because it's meeting the other zoning requirements. So, isn't this just, doesn't this just exemplify the political differences in the community more than anything else?
I mean, it does. I mean, I think developers know that, you know, if they, I mean, we've had a project on, that's been resubmitted to the council, I think, seven times now. So, I think the developers have come to expect that they just keep bashing on the council long enough, they'll eventually get their project approved.
Where I'm down.
Yeah. And in most cases, getting a project approved is a tremendous benefit to the developer. You know, and getting, you know, the, any little exemptions to zoning are, you know, huge financial benefit to the developer. So, that's part... So that's part of putting this professionalism in place that the architectural review board is stopping that whole process of believing that we can just ramrod our idea through rather than really address the real concerns of the community about the architectural compatibility of the projects. And I think that if there was an additional barrier there of really professional architects calling the developer's architect to task, to solve the problems that the project has, then we might see a change in the culture of developers and make them much more responsive to the, you know, feelings of the community to want to have architecturally compatible buildings in the city. And that doesn't mean that everything has to be a, you know, colonial building or, you know, a modern building or any particular style. But I think what we really want to have is buildings that really, in one way or another, respond to and are compatible with their adjoining neighborhoods or properties.
All right, it's time for some lightning round questions. So you want to throw it out?
Dive into it. Yes. Switch gears here. What role, if any, should the city play in establishing citywide high-speed broadband?
Well, I don't know what the answer is to high-speed broadband. We have the dark fiber network in place. We've been struggling how to leverage that and get that the last 100 yards, I guess it is probably, or last quarter mile. The city's gonna... I think probably the realistic answer is the city's going to have to partner with somebody for that last mile. And they've been trying to do that for, I don't know, five years now. I don't know what will break the law of GM on that, but I think it's really important for the city to do it. I mean, if Palo Alto's going to be the center of technology in the Bay Area and wants to keep that mantle, then I think we really need to get that high-speed fiber network built out.
So you want the city to have the role as opposed to letting...
Yeah, I think the city needs to have a role, but I don't think it's the city's job to build it out. I think it's the city's job to figure out how to manage... Get partners working together to build it out to the home.
What changes would you make to the downtown residential parking program, if any? And in what ways should the Evergreen Park and South Gate programs differ?
Well, I think the first thing we have to recognize is that residential parking problem is not a static problem, it's a dynamic problem. I mean, we saw that a couple of weeks ago when city council talked about the downtown residential parking permit process that they have there. They had put a process in place with every... With the best intentions to solve everybody's problem there, but after it was in place for a few months, you know, we saw that there was problems with it. It's like squeezing the balloon. As soon as you put some constraints in place, you know, people looking for parking adapt and adjust and move further out, move into different neighborhoods. So I think each neighborhood is going to have to have its own specially tailored residential parking permit and it will have to be adjusted as the parkers adjust to the residential parking permit program.
Turning our attention to enforcement, your answer to the question about granny units is that you would favor not having granny units, accessory dwelling units in neighborhoods or relaxing those rules because you don't feel like the city is enforcing conditions around those? Similarly, Airbnb is hanging out there.
Well, yeah. I mean, I don't think the city has a lot of capability to enforce its ordinances. You know, and it doesn't matter what ordinance it is, whether it's the leaf blowers or construction start times. The city just doesn't have the capacity... I mean, it depends on voluntary compliance and it doesn't really have any enforcement capability once people decide that they're not going to voluntarily comply. My understanding is we have four enforcement officers, only four for the whole city. And, you know, the kind of scuttlebutt is that one of the enforcement officers is not very effective. So we're really maybe at three and a half or, you know, three and a quarter enforcement officers for the whole city. So we don't have much ability to enforce. And furthermore, I mean, I think that until we have the ability to enforce, we shouldn't be allowing developments to be built that require enforcement because that's, you know, that's asking for failure.
Do you think that coenforcement should be beefed up?
I do think it should be beefed up.
And what about Airbnb rentals? Are you in favor of regulation?
I am. I think that, you know, like any kind of new, you know, kind of technology, essentially Airbnb is a kind of new technology, the government is behind in coping with it. I can foresee, you know, quite a few problems with that. I mean, I think that right now, we're seeing lots of trailers and RVs parked along El Camino and in my understanding is a lot of those are being rented out as Airbnbs. And they're taking up a precious resource that we have, which is parking places. And there's other, you know, they're also air... You know, the type of Airbnb-type things are also contributing to what I call sequestered housing. We have a lot of sequestered housing in Palo Alto. That is housing that's technically zoned for residential but is being used for another use. You know, we have residential properties that are being rented on Airbnb. So they become underutilized as a residence because, you know, like a hotel, you have a lot of unoccupied space.
So not to... I'm trying to speed along here. So would you require anybody that's providing housing in that fashion to get a permit? Would you ban it? What mechanism would you use?
Well, I think permitting is the first step so that we can understand, you know, what's being done. So I don't think it's... It's hard to make a policy until you really understand, you know, I mean, these are all rumors that the trailers on El Camino are Airbnb's.
Yeah, but a little research on Airbnb provides you with a lot of data about what's going on in Palo Alto.
Right. But I still would start with a permit just so you can start to collect the data and understand, you know, the extent and the depth of the issue and then decide whether permitting is enough or you need to put some additional controls. I mean, you know, other cities are doing it. San Francisco's doing it.
Okay. Would you favor increasing the fines that are currently being levied against the developer of the Edgewood Plaza development for the vacancy of the grocery store?
Yes, I would. And furthermore, another issue that I'm kind of promoting with my campaign is the idea of project quality control. I mean, I come from the computer... From the technology industry and in the technology industry, if a vendor fails consistently to perform their service or provide the product as specified, they get crossed off a qualified vendor list. And so we have a lot of developers that are not meeting the expectations of what they had promised when they were begun their project. So we need to, you know, rate all projects against developer promises. And developers that are consistently not meeting expectation should not be viewed as leniently when they come before council with new projects because we should be skeptical about their promises. So I would be in support of increasing the fine for the Edgewood developer to $5,000 a month or $5,000 a day.
A day.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big whack.
It is. But right now, I think they've been kind of contemptuous. I mean, they're acting like a business and, you know, the $1,000 a day is the cost of doing business.
Yeah. Well, I believe their point of view, as I understand it, is that the Fresh Grocery, wherever the name of that company is, that they still are paying the rent and so... And they won't relinquish the lease.
Well, so... But that's what Sandhill signed up for, right? They said they put a grocery in there. And it's not okay for them to come back with excuses. If the lease is the problem, then they need to buy them out of the lease.
Dumb thing that occurred when they entered into the lease. Yeah. You want to do one last question?
One last question about city staffing. Several departments have reported that they're having problems recruiting and retaining employees. So given that the city already carries an enormous pension liability, do you have any ideas on how the city can attract and retain qualified applicants?
Well, I think the city's doing a pretty good job. I mean, I think that Palo Alto's a good place to work. I'm not... I'm a little bit skeptical that there's not a lot of people out there that would love to work in Palo Alto City Government. They have great benefits, they work in a really nice city. So we do... I mean, there's been a lot of talk about the unfunded liabilities. It's potentially a problem, but it's more or less under control. I mean, I think the city needs to keep pressure on city employees and make sure they're not getting overpaid, especially management-level employees.
All right. Stuart Karl, thank you very much for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.